Call to order the town council regular session at 7:45 and the time is Tuesday, November 12th. You could all stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee. Here. Councilman Donnelly.
Here.
Councilwoman Healy.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of October 28th. And if we can have a motion in a second and then I'll just make one little amendment. Or I'll make the amendment now.
On the work session?
Yep, October 28th. Sorry.
I move approval of the work session from, where are we? October 28th.
Second.
Motion in a second, ready to vote. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We have the regular session of October 15th continued from October 28th, 2013, and October 28th. So if I could just reflect back on page 10, I believe, on October 28th. If we can just add, under comments from interested citizens, council, council president Whaley had referenced three letters submitted by Geraldine Perry in regard to the potential roost ordinance procedure. And I just wanted to state the names for the records to add to that. It is Marjorie Weiss for one letter, and Noel Smith, two people that signed that letter. And then it was the second letter with Kate Donegan and Josh Sherman. And then the third letter was from Dorold Beasley and Trudy, T-E-U-T-C-H. Tootch. So if I could just make that amendment. And then the October, do you want me to take them separately? Or just put them together? Okay. So can we have-
I move approval of the October 28th minutes as amended by President Whaley.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion carries. And then just a minor reference to October 15th regular session. The names of the people that are listed, if we can just list their names rather than opposed or advocates, and people can refer back to the tape. And then on page 23, council president Whaley votes no. If we could just add, because she wanted to bring it back to the next meeting with recommendations from the town solicitor. Do we have a motion in a second?
So what is this, this motion is just listing names and not listing their opinions?
Right.
If that's correct, okay. And then you want to, I just want to understand this, and you want the verbiage in there in terms of, your verbiage is in terms of why you voted-
Why I voted no.
Okay.
I thought you just wanted, because she wanted to bring it back to the next meeting with recommendations from the town solicitor.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. If you're making a motion, I'll second that with your verbiage, that's fine, that's okay.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Which brings us to the consent agenda. Would anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion carries. At this time, I'd like to hold off on the licenses A through J and move to page nine and open the public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to the renewal of liquor licenses for the year beginning December 1st, 2013. Said licenses are granted contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. Applications for licenses to sell intoxicating beverages under the provision of Title III of the general laws of 1956, as amended, have been filed as follows. So I'm going to just go through each section. Steve, did you want to say anything before I go into it? Okay, so the first one is, I'm going to go through each class license. I'm going to ask if there's any questions here at the town council table. I'm going to read the name of each license and then I'm going to open the mic for comments from the public. And then we will make a motion at the end. So we're on Class A retailer licenses. This is Jabber's Liquors, Patsy's Package Store, Sweeney's Package Store, Wakefield Liquors. All of these encompass Class A retailer. Any questions here at the town council table? I'm going to open it for the mic. This is a public hearing. If anyone has any comments, questions about the Class A retailer license, please come to the mic now. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to Class B Victorla license. This is the 108 Road House. This is doing business as the Pump House Bar and Grill. We have 333 Main Street doing business as Fat Belly's Irish Pub. We have 629 Succotash doing business as Matunik Oyster Bar. We have Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar. We have Bobby G's Pub, Captain Jack's Restaurant, Chen's Restaurant. We have the Muse Tavern, Dragon Palace of Wakefield, Jero's Hometown Grill, Hanson's Pub, Italian Village, Ocean Mist, Kabuki, Laura Lane Country Club, Kachina Twist, Old Mountain Lanes, Astia Restaurant, Phil's Restaurant, Rhodey Joe's, Pizza Metzo, Pizzeria Metzo, Rose Hill Golf Club, Shogun Steak and Seafood, Tara Mulroy's Joyce Family Pub, Chop House Grill, and Totoria Romano South. Any town council have any comments? Seeing none, I will open it to the microphone. Does anybody have any comments in reference to the Class B Victorla license? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to Class B tavern license. This is Bistro by the Sea, South Kingston Hotel Associates doing business as Holiday in South Kingston. Any comments here from town council? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Moving along, Class B Hotel. This is South Kingston Hotel Associates doing business as Holiday in South Kingston. Comments from the town council? Any comments from the public? Moving along to Class B Limited, we have Tony's Pizza Palace. We have La Strada Wood Fired Pizza, known as La Strada Cafe and Pizzeria, DB's Pizza. Comments here at the table for Class B Limited? Seeing none, comments from the public? Moving along, Class D Club Full Privilege License. We have the Elks Clubs of South Kingston, number 1899, and we have the URI Board of Governors Faculty Center. Town council questions or comments? Public comments or questions? Moving to the Class T Legitimate Theater, we have South County Center for the Arts. This is doing business as the Courthouse Center for the Arts. Any comments here at the table? Comments for the public? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close the public? One minute, okay.
I move-
Steve, sorry?
Just one point that I do want to raise is that all liquor licenses will be issued as of December 1st if they are in full compliance with all of the rules and procedures for the holding of a liquor license. Those include having certificates from the state for certificates of good standing, compliance with fire safety codes, compliance with zoning ordinances, as well as payments to the town for property taxes and/or user fees. At this point of the licenses that are being reviewed this evening, there are approximately nine that have deficiencies. Those deficiencies must be corrected on and before Thanksgiving for us to be able to get the license issued to each of those establishments so that they will be legally available to sell alcohol for the December 1st date. So I want to make it clear that while there's no commentary tonight relative to non-compliance with the various ordinances and rules and procedures, each of those licensees are required to comply with all of the provisions of the town council's directives for those licenses to be issued by the town clerk. Again, the council approves the license, the clerk issues the license. If the license isn't issued based on non-compliance, then that establishment is directed by the police department not to sell alcoholic beverages until the deficiencies are corrected.
So they have to be issued by November 17th because that's next to the end of the-
And if there is a matter before the zoning board, if there's a variance request, what happens with the licenses then?
I'll let Mike address that. I believe that if there's an appeal to a standing violation, that the item would be told so that they would be in compliance on that date.
That is absolutely correct. As long as something's pending, the clerk will be able to issue the license if, in fact, an application's pending.
She needs her inhaler. Does she have it?
Inhale, oh, I know. The cougher.
Just going to take a brief moment. Jim, did you have any further questions for Mike?
No, I think Mike kind of filled us, heard what I needed to hear. And that is, any appeal? I mean, whether it's over, what kind of issues before the zoning board except building and/or parking and what else could be?
Right, no, as long as there's an application pending before the zoning board or filed with the clerk's office questioning any of those issues, Jim, that would toll it, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
I don't want to move the vote forward with two town council members not at the table.
Yeah, they should be back in a second. Dale, let's just point out, I said filed with the clerk. It has to be filed with the zoning official, yeah.
Are there any questions from the public while we're waiting in reference to Mr. O'Neil's questions?
She may have swallowed a cough drop, I'm not sure.
She takes her asthma spray.
Yeah, yeah.
I just saw the paper container, so I know she's joined in.
She's got, she's got that.
Yeah.
Just a five-minute break.
Sorry, say it again. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Steve.
I think that what you could do is to close the public hearing with a three since there weren't any questions, and then possibly take a five-minute recess.
So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, and then zero and two abstentions? Is that how we should record the vote? Mike, Dale?
No, once they come back, we'll have them put their vote on the table.
Okay. All right, and then we'll take a five-minute break right now, okay? My apologies.
Jim, that sounded like me. I've had like the walking pneumonia. I mean, at some points, I was like, oh my God. I was like, cough.
She must have had a cough drop. She just swallowed a cough drop.
Well, I've had the, I was, when the time I was sick, I had like walking pneumonia again.
Voice is fine.
Yeah, no, it's still thumped back. I'm not, I feel better, but I'm still, you lie at night, you hear yourself whistling, you know? I got the inhaler and I got the cough syrup and stuff. And you wake up, like last night, losing sleep, wake up and going, I get up.
But do you have the same issues I do? What season of change is we're going through?
It could be, but it's, you know what, you know what, it could be.
Like sinus headache, pinky on your eyes, you can't really choose what's false.
It's like the last two or three years, I used to have like sinus headaches, and now it's turned into like bronchial stuff. So I had chest x-rays and my doctor said, he said, "Your lungs sound like Velcro being pulled apart." Yeah. It's just like, you know, because you can't like, you can't catch your breath, and you know what, you're tired all the time. You're tired, and your eyes are watering, and it's like, and I feel, believe, because I was here, last meeting, I stopped in in the afternoon, I read everything, I just wanted to pick up my stuff. And I was like out of it that whole week. I mean, I was basically in bed. Thank God Belmont's is 100 feet away. I walk over and I get like, I gotta-
This knocks my head out, but you keep an energy level. My energy level's still good, but I just can't.
The energy.
They really knocked out.
Thank God for Belmont's and that chicken soup.
Yeah.
No.
Well, now you're a few minutes.
I don't know.
I think we should have liquor in this thing.
Paul is in between, what, bronchitis and, is it officially a bronchitis or not?
Yeah, bronchitis, yes. So I had Z, the Z-Pak, you know?
Oh, yeah, the Z-Pak, yeah.
Which really helps knock, knock it out of you, you know?
I'm sorry.
Oh, don't be.
Okay. We had a motion in a second to close the public hearing, but I'm going to take a revote on that.
I'm sorry, what's that?
We did vote, but I'm going to revote. Motion to close the public hearing, I think it was made by Paul and seconded by Jim, so we're going to do the vote over. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. And then could we have a motion?
I move approval of the public hearing relative to the renewal of liquor licenses for the year beginning December 1st, 2013. Said licenses are granted contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. At this time, can we go back and have a motion? We would like to box A through J.
I move that we include in licenses six, all items A through J.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us now to page 15, the second public hearing.
Do we have to vote on approval of those licenses? I don't know. I don't know.
We just boxed them together.
Do we need to, we boxed all of them together. Do we need to now vote on approval of those new licenses?
We just did that.
Okay. All right.
Second public hearing is a public hearing relative to an application for transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of 1956, as amended, as follows. So we have Class B Victorla liquor license. This is a transfer of Class B Victorla license from MCT Incorporated doing business as Kachina Twist, 2095 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Michael G. Mara, administrator of the estate of Stephen Mara, to MCT Incorporated doing business as Kachina Twist, 2095 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Michael Mara, sole member. Galatto Limited Liability Corporation for the first-floor dining room lounge and bar area and is further defined in a site plan and filed in the town clerk's office. This application is filed to effectuate a transfer of 50% or greater of the stock of the corporation and will be effective for the year beginning December 1st, 2013. Said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees, and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and satisfaction of all claims. Steve, do you have anything to add before I? Someone here to speak on behalf of Kachina Twist?
Yes.
Okay, if you could come to the microphone, please. Welcome. Could you just state your name for the record?
My name is Mike Morris, Sr., different from Michael G. We had a situation where my younger son, Steve, passed away, and for the past two years, it's been in probate. And I think what Michael's doing right now is just getting the final transfer from probate under his name to go forward.
And our condolences again.
Thank you.
Steve, do you have any questions?
No, the only issue I would point out is, as you've read into the record, is that the license request for the transfer and the ownership is for the year beginning December 1st, rather than for a transfer to occur prior to the start of the new liquor license year.
We understand.
Okay. Any questions here? This is a public hearing. Any questions here at the town council table? Seeing none, Mike, I'm just going to ask if anybody from the public would like to ask a question, respond? Seeing none, could we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and could we have a motion, please?
Thank you very much. I move approval of a public hearing B, which is a transfer of the Class B Victorla liquor license from MCT, Inc., Kachina, doing business as Kachina Twist, to MTC, Inc., doing business as Kachina Twist. And said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to communications. Our first is a communication dated October 17th from Robert Shoemaker, Ruth Anderson, and Soraya Neighbors expressing their application, excuse me, appreciation of the town council's consideration of a potential roost ordinance and their willingness to mediate the issue with a neutral party is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and I move that we refer this matter to the town manager and Mr. Osillo for recommendations to the three parties who are interested in mediation, and anyone else that might be interested in mediation to a possible mediator. Obviously, this is, would be outside of the town's involvement necessarily, other than the referral, and would not be any cost to the town, but they will contact all parties interested in mediation.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. B is a communication dated November 5th, 2013, from James Sheehy requesting letters of citation for Matthew James Sheehy and Brian Aloy Hemp for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and inviting council members to attend their award ceremony on Sunday, November 24th, 2013, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
Obviously, we discussed this also at the work session, and we will certainly, Dale's going to put together those, a citation for both of those boys, and I will attend the November 21st award ceremony, 24th, sorry. And we also would like to invite them to the November 25th town council meeting.
I also just want to add to the record here, I know Mr. Sheehy in West Kingston, I think it's the 97th Eagle Scout, and they're hoping to have a celebration when they hit 100. So I will be out of the state and truly appreciate Mr. Sheehy's efforts. Have had lots of conversations with him, so. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. This is the time that we open the microphone. If anybody would like to come and bring a comment to the town council. So the microphone's open. Seeing none, I would just like to congratulate Terry Murphy and all of her work with the parade committee for an outstanding parade. It was definitely a wonderful day and a real tribute to honor all of our veterans. So it just gets better and better every year. So thank you. And I just want to briefly speak about the Joe Tiger to Patrick event at the Elks. It was sponsored by the Veterans Committee of the South Kingston Elks, as well as the VFW Ladies Auxiliary, which I'm proud to say I'm a member of both. And it was just a wonderful turnout. We ended up setting up additional tables. I want to personally thank Meg Healy for helping out with the raffle and getting donations. It was a successful night and a beautiful slide presentation put on by Joe Tiger Patrick accentuating his trip across, his walk across the United States of America to increase awareness of the 6,722 United States service member casualties, which is now even above that number, resulting in the war in Afghanistan and Iraq, carrying an American flag and an 8x25 banner. For those of you Facebook friends, if you take a look at Joe Tiger Patrick's website, you get to see a picture of the banner and those faces that have passed in Afghanistan and Iraq. And I also would be remiss if I did not mention Dale for the wonderful proclamation that you put together. Yeah, did a beautiful job. So, any other comments here at the table? Seeing none, we'll move on to town manager's report.
As I noted in the pre-session, we have got a confirmation from the school committee for availability to meet on December 18th for the joint budget hearing of the council and the school committee. I also want to note for the record that the month of December will have one regular council meeting. That meeting will be the first meeting of the month, and the second meeting will be canceled. So the meeting would be on December 9th. The meeting for, normally scheduled for December 23rd, for obvious reasons, would be canceled. So we will get whatever business we can onto that ninth agenda, and the next regular scheduled meeting will be the first, first meeting in January, which I think is also the 9th of January. of January. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them on any of the reports that I've issued since the last council meeting.
Steve, I would just like to, you know, thank you and the town council for making the priorities for Washington County Regional Planning Council Legislative Breakfast for December 6th. So, thank you. Any questions for Steve? Town solicitors report.
Unless there are questions for me, I have nothing in particular.
Seeing none, which brings us to appointments. I believe we have a couple.
Let's see, Jim, did you want to make those on the conservation commission?
Yeah.
Is the mic on, Jim?
Pardon?
Is the mic on?
Wait. Don't know. Always thought my voice carried. Anyway, I would like to make two appointments. I'll have to ask Dale for the dates here, but both Andrew Martinez and Jennifer Ann James to the Conservation Commission. Dale, I don't know if they're similar dates or ones are fill and then a new. If you could help me out.
So, it's one, so it's down to 2013, and one is down to 2015, and the other one is down to 2016.
Well, we're by the 13th, right? So, we might as well, do we pick and choose?
Do the two longest.
Yeah, let's do the two longest, so we're-
I think we want to sell two.
All right, well, alphabetically, James will get the early one and Andrew Martinez the latter one. Nope? Okay. I'm going to reverse that. Let me reverse that. I thought there were two outstanding candidates, so hopefully that-
Oh, he did? Oh, okay.
He did say Jennifer, James for the longer one.
Yeah, that's what you said. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. No, that's good.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And next item on the agenda is new business item E. Nope, sorry, C. This is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Paray Corporation, 8 Blackstone Valley Place, Lincoln, Rhode Island, for engineering, consulting, and design services to relocate the Town Beach Pavilion in a mountain to exceed $10,000, including a $2,100 contingency and as further described in a memorandum from the director of leisure services to the town manager dated November 1st, 2013, and entitled Pavilion Relocation Project.
In 1990, we constructed the Beach Pavilion. Pear was the consulting engineer for that project. What we would like to do at this point is to commission Pear again to be able to do the relocation. Since they were responsible for the initial building and the pilings, we felt it was appropriate to stay with that company because they would, they've got the original plans and based on the structure, the building itself, we want to ensure that there's not going to be a conflict with a new engineer having difficulty with the prior construction detail. So, we wanted to stay with Pear. We solicited a proposal. The proposal was in at 7,900. We want with the contingency to have it not to exceed on the project at $10,000. Request the council's approval as presented.
Thank you, Steve. Could we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item C.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Which brings us to new business item E. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Coastal International Trucks Limited Liability Corporation, 17 O'Keefe Lane, Walk, Rhode Island, for a 2014 International 7400 Dump Truck with haled dump body and Viking snow plow and a mountain to exceed $149,356, including trade-in, and is further described in a memorandum from the public services director to the town manager dated November 7th, 2013, and entitled Bid Recommendation: $40,000 GVW Dump Truck with Snow Plow. Steve?
Two bids were received. Recommendations to go with the lowest presented bid, which is as presented the agenda with Coastal International Trucks.
I move approval of new business item E.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I believe-
Motion to adjourn.
That is the end. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 8:20.